Wayne, would you please make us a pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the board.
Trustee Yertler?
Here.
Trustee Kowitski?
Here.
Trustee Giesman?
Here.
Let the record note that Mary Robb, uh, trustee Clark is not in attendance. Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve public hearing for, um, 2000, um, budget hearing, 2014, 2015 budget hearing that was held on April 8th, 2014? Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
I'm going to abstain since I was not in attendance.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2014, forward meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Yertler?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Abstain, not in attendance.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sorry?
That's okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2014, closed meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Abstain.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Any communications?
There are no communications at this meeting.
Any visitors' remarks that are not on the agenda, persons?
Good afternoon, my name is Mayor Yurk, who would be after the Displanes Valley Council Boy Scouts of America. Uh, here, just wanted to give you guys a quick brief of what the scouts have done.
You, um, you were on a grant list, so you can speak then, okay? Um, supervisor report, for, um, I haven't set down the exact date, but it'll be the last, one of the last two weekends in July, Japanese-American, um, civilian league will give a presentation about the, um, who goes, who stays during World War II when the Japanese are interned, on interment. Um, you see some of the literature and the history and some of what, you know, had, had gone on. Okay, it'll be given, um, July 20th at 1:00 PM in the auditorium, which will be a Sunday. Like to have a, um, a budget for that. Like we have for the past, the past two or one, and the other one coming up. I believe that was $300.
If I could comment?
Sure.
That's not on the agenda under new business.
Okay, so you want to, okay, budget then, next, no big deal.
Yeah.
Okay. Trustees' reports.
None.
Okay, mental health board, there you've got the minutes in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, under old business. Township bicycle, um, drive event which Jan put together. You see the flyer, Jan, you want to talk about it?
Well, it's moving forward, we were at the North Riverside Senior Fair last week, and I took, um, several of these flyers up there and distributed them and talked to a number of people who were very positive about having, you know, bikes that they might bring over. I also talked with individuals in the Riverside and North Riverside Police Departments, and they said they would probably have some bikes for us. Normally, the Riverside Police Department donates their bikes to this organization anyway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which was interesting, so...
See, yeah, excuse me, I thought they, they, they sold them, didn't they used to?
I don't know, I don't know.
They used to have a big sale and...
Yeah, I, I don't know, they may have, and, and I questioned that, and he said, no, that they do donate them, and they donate them to working bikes. And North Riverside donates them generally to Seg One, um, but they said, "You guys have been very generous with us, and, um, so we'll support you, and we'll make sure you get some bikes from us too."
Some bikes, okay, yeah, split it in half.
Yeah, exactly. So I distributed some of these around town today, in the Brookfield, uh, public building over there, your municipal, the building, their municipal building. I took them to the, um, library up in North Riverside, uh, the library here around town. I'm having a banner done, and...
Did you find out where to get it done yet?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it, sign up.
And how much is it?
It's $75.
Okay.
For a four-and-a-half by six-and-a-half. Um, I made a reservation at the park with the Public Works, so it's gonna be put up from May 23rd to June 6th. And the final thing is to, um, get in touch with newspapers, to get some information to the newspapers. Oh, and one other thing I saw, you know, Joanne Cozy does an article for the Landmark, and she said she would be happy to do something in her article within the next couple of weeks on the event too, so it's getting his...
Yeah, yeah, I remember, we were talking about that, you said you went to Joanne when you were in...
Yeah, so, you know, she's always looking for news, and she was happy to, you know, do it, so... I mean, it's as much I could think of to advertise the event, so we'll see what happens.
Put an ad in the paper?
Not yet, but I will, not yet, but I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to do it too soon.
Oh, no, but I mean, you know...
Yeah.
I, I didn't know if you, you mentioned that you...
Yeah, no, no, I am gonna do the ad, that's the last thing that I need to do, is, um, to follow up on that, of course, get the banner up, but it's in the works.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think it'll be good, I mean, we'll see.
Um, next one is, uh, Talk Spring Conference, which is, uh, Wednesday, May 21st. Um, I signed up, but I, I'm not gonna be able to go. Wayne signed up, anybody else who's going, please sign up. Um, there is a board, there is this on the bulletin board, it's been up there for a long time. And Wayne and I were the only ones who've signed up so far.
Well, I finally signed up, I had, had a conflict because I had mental health board that same night. So I talked to everybody else, because we're short on the board, and I wanted to make sure they would have a quorum. So I called everybody, and it seems like everybody else can make it, so they'd have a quorum without me.
Okay. Um, this came from Mary Robb, revisit, uh, Costco membership, okay, I've finally got ahold of somebody I could talk to at Costco. I mean, you know, downloading stuff on their website was extremely frustrating and hard. There are two type of memberships, now, the executive membership, they say, "What you order, you'll get paid back at the end of the year, basically." It's $110, or just the business membership for $55, which would the board prefer?
Did you want to get a membership there, I thought we kind of put it off.
I don't know, you know, do, do we?
I'm already a member.
Yeah, Mary Robb is too.
Well, what would we use Costco for, I think that's the thing, I mean, would we make enough purchases to make it worthwhile?
We could buy some papers, but, you know...
The big thing is, um, the discount on gasoline.
Yeah, well, we don't own a car, so we don't.
No, but I mean your own.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can't use the discount.
The other thing, you know, occasionally, like, in this month's meeting, we have, um, uh, tables that, you know, were suggested that we buy. They're about five, six bucks cheaper per table, and you're talking 10 tables. Is it worth?
Well, let me, let me ask you this, now, one time we had a membership to Sam's Club.
Right.
How often did we use it?
Not that often, and then the billing dates were strange.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, and you know, probably the same problem with Costco, Osko or whatever, but, um, I don't know.
The location is perfect.
Pardon?
The location is great.
I, I understand, they're, they're not cheap either, I mean, for, for buying in bulk.
Well, they're competitive.
Competitive, but they're not real cheap.
Okay, so the answer is no.
Okay.
Okay, under new business. Um, grants. Here we go. Uh, Riverside Arts Center's annual grant, and they're looking for $7,500 again. Which we've been giving them for since 2014.
I'll make a motion that we grant the Riverside Arts Center the $7,500.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing, hearing, pardon me?
I, I think it would be, um, interesting and useful if, um, this organization would give us a copy of their annual financial report.
I thought we had asked for that once.
I thought we got it, got it once or twice.
Yeah, I thought they were giving it to us, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to remind them.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So, we're gonna vote?
I'd like to see it, uh, from all those grants, that we make over a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Riverside Chamber of Commerce...
We didn't vote.
On poll, roll call, poll.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Riverside Chamber of Commerce. For their annual car show. Looking to buy porta potties, and they're looking for $1,050 to ma- made out to Twilight Party Runners. This is what we've basically done in the past. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we grant the Chamber of Commerce $1,050.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
Hold table to Twilight Party.
Right. Hearing none, roll call.
Who gave the second?
I thought Wayne did.
I did.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Yertler. Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Um, Displanes Valley Council on Boy Scouts, they're grant, they're looking for a $2,000 grant. Now, I believe you've got two or three minutes to speak, and that's it if you want to speak.
Thank you, I just wanted to share some numbers with you guys very quickly. Uh, on Riverside, we have Troop and PAC 24 that are chartered out of Riverside, progressive in charge, and we have 142 boys out there in those two programs. Troop and PAC 92 out of senior Catholic Church in Riverside as well, 52 boys in their programs. The Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 39 in Riverside Police also has an Explorer post where their youth are involved in career orientation program. Uh, that is second to none, we have 11 youth and six officers there. Between all four of those units, we have recorded over 4,000 community service hours in Riverside. Out of those two, we have received two Eagle Scouts in 2013. So, uh, these youth are making significant impact in the community. Uh, we want to thank you guys and the bench you guys have helped us out in the past, and thank you for your contributions.
What, what percentage of total Boy Scouts that you supervise are from Riverside?
I myself, I, I don't supervise any scout...
But they're the organization.
The organization, Riverside, um, it's a fraction of our council, we oversee 42 different communities, sir. Riverside being one of those, 42.
42 communities?
Yes, sir.
Could you get us a financial statement, since like Wayne had mentioned anything over a thousand he would like?
Absolutely, I can get those to you, so this tomorrow.
Okay, you could fax it to us.
Very well.
Okay?
Manuel, did you sign in?
Yes, she did.
She did.
And, uh, do you have a paper that I can have with the numbers that you quoted?
I can certainly do so.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your time.
Do I hear a motion to grant the Boy Scouts of America, uh, Displanes Valley, $2,000?
I'll make a motion to grant the Displanes Valley, uh, Council Boy Scouts $2,000.
I'll second.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, North Riverside Public Library for, um, looking for a grant for $612.96 for books.
I make a motion to grant Riverside Public Library...
North Riverside.
North Riverside, $612.
No, I, I, I think we have to name who we're purchasing the books from, because that's intergovernmental.
Baker &amp; Taylor, uh...
So we'll have to mention that in the motion.
Is it?
Okay.
For the North Riverside Library.
According to their lists, that we issue checks that way.
Well, the $650 of Baker &amp; Taylor, I guess, is on the motion then, right? For the North Riverside Library, I'll second the motion.
Any questions, concerns?
The total was $612.96 according to...
Pardon?
The total was $612.96, you said $650.
He, he did, I just seconded it, it's a six, I'm seconding the motion, so whatever, $612.96.
Any other questions or concerns? Or do you want to go through each one, John? Well, yeah, where it's gonna be made out to Baker &amp; Taylor, uh...
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Whoever was on that list, Baker &amp; Taylor, it's seven, whoever they missed.
Actually, Baker &amp; Taylor is $347.79, and Business Card is $265.17.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, I'll make note of that in the motion.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Agent Care Connection, their annual grant, and they are looking for $2,000.
I don't know if this is an annual grant, because we just made, uh, a grant to them in November, and it was $6,000, so I have a feeling that this is a partial request, that they're probably gonna be back.
$6,000 was in 2013.
In November, but if you look at the list, it was in November. I am just, just noting that.
So, well, how do you want to put it then, Jan, or just saying they'll probably be back, you just remember?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm just noting it, that's all.
We'll see it when, when it comes.
Right.
Yeah.
I would not be surprised if you don't see another request this year, that's all I'm saying.
The, well, that one for $6,000 came in in November.
Right, and it's May, so...
As only six...
Are you saying they may be asking for more toward the end of the year?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be my guess, but, I mean, just a comment.
All right. Are you making a motion?
Because when you said annual, you know, that makes it sound like it's a once-a-year thing, and I don't know that it's gonna be...
Are you making the motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant $2,000 to Agent Care Connections.
Second the motion.
And they've already got their financial year 2014, 2015.
It's right here.
There was a second?
I seconded it.
Yeah, Jan seconded it.
Okay, did, Wayne, did you, did anybody, did you look at the, the budget?
Yes.
Did you have any concerns about that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know this group does great work, and they say in here they've supported or are supporting 313 residents of the township, but I, I was just kind of surprised at the amount that goes into administrative...
Boy, I am too, $650,000?
Expenses, I mean, well, yeah, but look at their...
It'll be income.
The salaries and personnel expenses is what I was looking at.
You can't miss it.
I mean, it's significant. Um, if they are a not-for-profit, right, they're not-for-profit, or 501(c), same thing. 501(c), and they do do good work.
They help a lot of people.
They help a lot of people.
Yes, they do.
Did you say they're non-for-profit?
They're 501(c), three.
Okay, because there is a gross profit line on here.
Well, that's an academy, uh, description. I'm surprised they use the word profit.
That's why I mentioned it.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Contagia Adult Life Services, looking for West Suburban Band for $550.
I make a motion. I make a motion we grant, uh, the band $550.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Scottish Home, looking for $550 for the, uh, their concert.
I make the motion we grant Scottish Home $550 for their West Suburban Concert Band.
I say...
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Yertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Energy Impact of Illinois, dump it all on the floor. And that is Liz Lyons, um, I talked to Liz, and what we thought would be, she could put out a, a program for the community, the residents, you know, um, to show the difference and explain what the different energy companies are charging, and the differences of what, um, you know, the prices may be from one to another. Liz, do you want to, you've got about two, three minutes.
Sure, yeah, I'll just say a quick, a little bit about a couple of programs that I'm working on. Um, so first of all, thanks for inviting me to speak with you all tonight. Um, so I'm in an organization called Elevate Energy, and Energy Impact of Illinois is a program within that. Um, Elevate Energy is a nonprofit organization whose mission is basically to educate residents about energy efficiency and help them make their homes more energy efficient and save money on their energy bills. So, one thing I like to make clear at the beginning is that I'm not from combat, I'm not someone who supplies or delivers energy, we're just trying to help people find the best option. Uh, so we have a couple ways to do that, first is to, um, put on a workshop for the community that's open to anyone, which I would love to work with you all to do. Um, and like we said, what we would do during that workshop is let people know about the different options that are out there. Uh, so if any of you heard this, uh, press conference yesterday from the Citizens Utility Board, um, they were talking about all of SCAM that are out there in terms of energy supply, so helping people find, um, reputable suppliers that are gonna actually help people save money, uh, rather than, you know, those people that come knocking on the doors and try to get people to sign up for things they didn't anticipate. Uh, so there's that educational aspect, especially around the new smart meters that have been installed, um, in the Riverside Township areas, and letting people know what those are. Uh, one of the new options, there are also some really good options for savings with those, um, through, uh, new pricing programs. So letting people know about those, helping people figure out if they're a good program, um, for their household, for their energy use. Um, and another program we have is called Energy Impact of Illinois, uh, and this, um, would also be part of the educational things that I would talk about if we did set up a program that's open to residents. Um, that program kind of helps people through the process of finding, uh, bigger, more impactful activities, or not activities, but upgrades to your home that can help prevent energy loss and help save savings on their energy bills. So, we offer free and reduced cost assessments for residents, um, in the Riverside Township area, um, and actually all over Illinois, so we offer the free and reduced cost assessment, and then help with applying for rebates if people go through with the work, like air sealing and insulation on their homes, that's gonna help, um, them get that savings on their energy bills. So basically, if you set up a program, um, those are the things that I would be talking about, just letting people know that these programs exist. Um, and beyond the program, I think that would be really great to have that. Uh, but just you as individuals, I would love to, um, talk with you and see if there are any opportunities to work with you individually, um, in your own neighborhood or on your own block, to, um, get people interested. So I mentioned the free assessment options, that is, um, given to a homeowner when they host what we call a house party, which is really the best method of outreach we have. So basically, how that would work is say, I wanted to get a free assessment, um, and help teach my community about energy efficiency. Uh, as community leaders, hopefully, you know that's something that you're concerned about, helping people be able to afford their bills. Uh, so I would invite 10 of my friends over, 10 of my neighbors, 10 of my coworkers, um, I would see a demonstration of an assessment in the home, um, to see where the energy loss is happening, and then I would receive that, um, assessment for free. That's one of the best outreach techniques we have alone with the workshops. So, um, if any of you are interested in even thinking about that, I would love to talk with you afterward. Otherwise, I think for now, planning that public, um, program or workshop is a great idea.
You know, you know, I'm sorry, John.
FYI, I got a notice today from Nycor Gas, something, Energy, or something. And they're offering this deal until May 31st. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
I wouldn't have to pay more than, I think, a 65 cents per term, maybe less, but there's a $1.99 charge every month for that.
Right, so is that a rebate you're talking about, or is it different?
A rebate, I, they would have, if I take this deal, they would add $1.99 to my bill every month for that service, but my terms would not, I would not have to pay over, I believe, don't quote me, about 65 point something cents per term.
Okay.
Forever, as long as I'm paying two bucks a month for that.
Yeah.
I never heard of anything like that, I just got it today.
I haven't heard of that from your mention, I know the rebates that, um, our program marks that are actually through Nycor, and those are for, um, insulation and air sealing, but I haven't heard of that one, so...
I just got it today, and the offer is good till May 31st.
Oh, wait, that must be something new then, but that's a good thing.
See if we can find out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
My thinking was she could, you know, we could hold it either on a, an evening or a weekend, um, presentation. Uh, Liz can speak, and whoever, you know, she has, you know, early fall before the wintertime, so they, you know, so people can get used to, oh, winter's coming, maybe this is a good time to think about it. That was my thinking. Yes, sir?
Suggestion, um, even in the summer, I just have one statement, AC, because everyone happened to crank that up as well. Suggestion, um, even in the summer, just have one saving in AC because everyone happened to crank that up as well, and we just said you guys had like Riverside days, isn't it? Maybe she may have possibly have a little help there.
Well, on, on that same note, I heard on the news, uh, I believe it was last week, that, now, we have, we, we use direct energy here in Riverside, it goes through ComEd.
Yeah.
But ComEd is raising their rates thirty-eight percent June first.
Yeah, which is why especially now it's important to really talk about energy efficiency, so everyone's prices going up. So direct energy, I know with the village, their bids were coming back really high. Uh, the direct energy is actually not in the business of municipal supply anymore because they're losing too much money. Uh, so basically, all the prices are going up, so that's why it's really important now to help people figure out ways they can, you know, use less energy, um, just be more conscious about that, because ComEd is raising their rates over twenty percent.
So direct energy is gonna be more expensive also?
Well, so Riverside will not have direct energy anymore because they're not doing municipal supply at all. Anyway, direct energy is out of that market. Individuals can still sign up with direct energy, um, but.
I didn't give any notice on that.
Well, the village is still looking for a new.
At eight times, we still have direct energy?
Yeah, right now we sell direct. Yeah, it's not, we did get switched back, but, so basically, the point is that prices are going up across the board, whether it's ComEd or these other suppliers that have had a lower rate, they're kind of raising it to make up for that difference now, they're realizing that they were losing money on a lot of those, so. Yeah, that's why energy efficiency is especially important right now, so.
So when, when do you, anybody have an idea when you think? You know, because we got something going in June, we'll have something in July. You.
Why, two comments. One, I don't know if you'd be interested or if they're still doing it, but the farmer's market used to have a, a booth for, um, you know, a local village, uh, whoever, like, we had a booth one year.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could have a booth at the farmer's market a couple of times, or even one time during the summer, and Liz or somebody could be there. And then, I mean, I think it'd be nice to try to do something here.
Yeah.
Too, and, you know, try to.
I mean, yeah, we.
Get the word out as much as possible.
We could just ask the village, give us a table, and we'll do what, you know, we'll ha, hand out newsletters and.
I think there's still.
If Liz can, you know, make those dates, it's usually, it's what? One-thirty or two-thirty to five or something?
Yeah, Wednesdays, the farmers.
Yeah.
On Wednesdays, yeah.
I thought it was like two-thirty to seven.
Yeah. I mean, even if you were there part of the time, you know.
And, you know, just bring pamphlets too, and you can put them on the, on the table, you know.
Maybe try that first?
Yeah.
Because you get a lot of people at those markets.
Yeah, and then I think fall, um, I mean, I think it's important to think about it all the time, so summer could be good for that, maybe just to get people kind of thinking about it. And then in the fall, that's a really good time to, you know, get people thinking about energy assessments and the energy upgrades, because, you know, before winter comes, we may have those, I guess, that they have to pay. That's a good time to get people.
What about the bicycle recycling thing in North Riverside on June seventh? Did you put pamphlets out or something there, or that's not, we don't really control that, do we?
Well, people usually just drive in and drop the bikes off, and I thought you had told me.
That's, I think, the way it's gonna work, basically, so I don't think that that would be a good venue for them.
Okay, one, I can, I can give you a call. Can let you know, and you can pick out certain dates after I talk to the village if we can set up a table.
Yeah, that would be great.
And then, you know, if you can get some more of these flyers or get me a clean one and I.
We have new flyers.
Huh?
Oh, send me that, we have new flyers.
Oh, okay.
Fancy new ones.
Fancy new ones, huh, okay.
Yeah, um, they cover all the smart meter stuff, which I want to know. Um, but yeah, also, just the last thing is the house parties especially, if any of you are at all interested in either helping me find posts for them, as, you know, you're probably well-connected, you can meet four or five months ago. That's another way that we can kind of jumpstart the outreach, um, right now, and, um, I'll just stick around after the meeting, and you, you know, might also want to, want to come up with a lead.
What was the name of the company you were with, actually?
Uh, Elevate Energy.
Elevate Energy, okay.
It's part of the Center for Neighborhood Technology.
Yeah.
Change in.
Okay, and just one comment, if, as far as a flyer, I'd make it, you know, as simple as po, because people don't really like to take paper, that's my experience. You know, so, it, particularly if it looks like a lot. Yeah. Yeah, well, this isn't even bad, the, I mean, this is pretty good if you're talking one page, but you might be talking a lot more than one page, I don't know.
Right, and we do have a brochure that has a lot of more pictures, and it covers like everything that I just talked about, and a little concise, and so also that you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you could bring the brochures and they could take them if they want them, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, it's very.
And then the, the one cheaters or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully they'll talk to you.
Right, yeah, that's the main.
That's real key.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is AIDS, AIDS, AIDS Options. Um, we, that is, they have an annual luncheon and volunteer recognition. And I put up, um, Bob Novich. And then it costs me thirty dollars to go. Do I hear a motion?
Novich's name?
N-O-V-I-C-H.
Well, this letter says Ray Nosel.
Yeah, Ray Nosel.
I'm sorry, Ray Nosel. Get those two confused.
Because they're both with the band, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what are you looking for?
Thirty dollars for me to go to the luncheon, to sit with Ray in case of, you know.
You can, you can fill yourself up on thirty bucks?
Pardon me?
You can fill yourself up on thirty bucks?
You know, they have, they have speakers there, and they introduce everybody and their brother, including the janitor, I think. Takes so long, they have more speakers than recipients.
I'll make the motion, I don't know, do the thirty dollars for the, uh, annual luncheon at the AIDS Options for you, for the supervisor.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Access to care. Uh, they have a luncheon, and its tickets are fifty-five dollars a person or five fifty per, five hundred and fifty dollars per table. Do I hear a motion? To buy a table, or any single person want to go, or?
What have we done before?
We haven't.
We haven't made any?
No.
Well, we've given them praise.
Yeah, we usually bought any, but they're not even asking for any. I don't hear a motion, so it'll be tabled. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the North Riverside two fourteen mayor, uh, Mayor's Golf Outing, which is sponsor our, it's, um, educational program, our scholarship fund for the kids in North Riverside. We, we usually buy two foursomes.
What, what does it cost them, two foursomes, quickly?
Seven hundred dollars for an, we usually get an Eagle sponsor for seven hundred, two of them for seven hundred.
Make a motion that we, uh.
It's fourteen hundred total.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant fourteen hundred dollars for two Eagle sponsors at the twenty-fourteen Golf Outing for the Riverside Golf Club, or North Riverside Youth Scholarship Fund. Is that what the benefit is gonna be?
Yes.
Okay, that's where the proceeds go, so is that who the check is gonna be made out to?
Pardon me?
Who's the check gonna be made out to? That or Riverside Golf Club?
Uh, no, North Riverside.
Youth Scholarship Fund?
Right.
Okay, and that's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, let us know who's gonna go, or if you want to go, or whatever.
What day is that?
Um, Monday, June ninth. Um, there is Supervisor Municipal League Quarterly Dinner. Does anybody want to register and go? It's three dollars per person. Believe that is the same night as TAC and the Mental Health Board meeting. Do I hear a, a motion? Hearing none, tabled. Um, the Allied Medical, uh, Catastrophe Insurance Annual Renewal.
Was it that amount last year?
Pardon me?
Was the, was the premium comparable?
Yes.
Listing now that we paid last year?
Yeah, it was around two thousand, I think, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
So moved to pay the Medical Assistant Catastrophic Insurance Program two thousand fifteen dollars, that's for annual insurance.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Card, our, um, security firm, their, they went up, um, two dollars, the new rate, twenty-seven dollars. Per, uh, per visit, per checking out.
How many times do they visit?
Seven days a week.
I mean, one, once a day, seven days a week?
Right, at nighttime. And then they make sure there's no stragglers in the washrooms, buildings, kitchen, and then they make sure the building's locked up.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we renew the contract with Card Northwest Mistral Security, uh, for twenty-seven dollars per visit. For how long is that, for one year?
Yes.
For one year.
Do I hear a second?
Isn't it more than that on holidays, though?
Yes, it is.
It says present rate twenty-five dollars, new rate will be twenty-seven.
That's what I'm reading on the, on the front page here.
No, they have holiday rate.
Holiday rate is thirty-seven.
Is how much?
Thirty-seven.
But the, that didn't go up, did it?
Yes.
Oh, did, oh, yeah, from twenty-seven to thirty, so, but why didn't they mention that on the front page here?
I don't know, they typed it up, they sent it out. Present rate twenty-five. And it's an hourly rate of twenty-seven dollars per day, and a holiday rate thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven dollars per day, all right, well, I'll include that in the motion then, and let's see where it goes.
And then if court appearance is thirty-five dollars an hourly rate.
Well, hopefully it'll never come to that.
Yeah, it hasn't, in mileage of, uh, sixty-five cents per month. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other questions or concerns?
Just a comment, if I could, on the contract agreement, the first page, which is the second page of what you gave us in the materials. Item seven, um, just to make sure that we get that information and to have the township named as an additional insured under the general liability, which they've added as the final paragraph on that page.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, concerns? Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next one is, has to do with the new air conditioning system. Uh, it's through the HVAC unit, which is, it's basically the blower motor and all that, it runs, but it's very, very old, it's very dirty. To clean it is gonna cost more than to replace it, and it should be, has to be cleaned, otherwise it's gonna break down and start smoking.
Is this the unit that's up in the ceiling?
Yes.
I have to say.
And we're, and we're still, they're still cheaper and doing more work than, um, DMI, where, which was the thirteen thousand, eight eighty-five. This one is ten thousand sixty, but we've already paid.
Thirty-three sixty.
Thirty-three sixty.
Right, so it's another sixty-seven hundred.
Well, I don't know if you want to get a motion first before we have discussion, or.
Yes, I do.
A comment, okay, well, then.
I'll make, all right, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, uh.
Do I hear a second?
For Riverside Plumbing and Heating, you've got the motion, right, Leanne?
Sixty-seven hundred.
Sixty-seven hundred for Riverside Plumbing and Heating for this new unit.
Do I hear a second?
That's for the office area?
Yes. In room three. I'll second it.
Okay, I don't understand this, because they were just here and we paid, or we're paying on a warrant today, the thirty-three sixty. And some of the things on here were things that supposedly they did when they were already here, like deep vacuum refrigerant system down to five hundred microns and charged refrigerant lines. Same thing is on here. I, I, why did they do this if they knew that this had to be done?
They didn't know that this had to be done until we started complaining, that, you know.
About what, that it wasn't cooling, right?
Yeah, so they came out and checked it out. Again.
But they were here, and they were looking at it, and they removed the condenser unit, they installed a dry charge.
On the outside, three ton, four ton.
Oh, that's outside?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Okay, so they're two different units.
Right.
Essentially, okay, now I, I better understand.
And, uh.
But are they connected? I mean, they both control the air in the office?
Right.
Whoa.
I'm not a plumber. But, like I say, it's still cheaper than the other one, by three thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kowitski?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, purchase of folding tables. Uh, we've got, you know, we've got, we should get about ten new ones. Um, of the plastic ones, because when we run out of the plastic ones, we've got those old, heavy, heavy ones, which are falling apart to begin with. You know, I mean, they're, they gotta be forty, fifty years old with that, you know.
Do I hear a motion to go with, uh, National Public Seating?
Well, Costco's.
No, that's who makes the.
Pardon me?
That's who makes the tables, I'm looking at National Public Seating.
Well, we, we go through Quill at eighty-nine ninety-nine each, or we go through Amazon, which is eighty-three thirty-eight each.
Obviously, we go with Amazon.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to purchase ten of those, uh, rectangular tables at eighty-three thirty-eight apiece.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns?
No, just, just one, how much does one of them weigh?
I can't hear.
How much does one of those tables weigh, you know?
Which ones, the old ones or the new ones?
The, the new one.
New ones are, it should say on here.
I was looking for it, I didn't, I didn't see it on here, I'll. Well, they have to be lighter than those old wooden ones.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Gives you a capacity, it will hold 1,000 pounds.
Okay.
To get the deal from Costco, you have to be a member, right?
Right.
Okay, obviously, okay, too bad.
Oh, that's another one.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Township Supervisors of Illinois Annual Dues, which is dues remaining at $25, I guess, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
So moved for the Township Supervisor of Illinois Annual Dues, for, how much was it?
$25.
$25.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. It's not really grand because they've got their budget, the Riverside Township Junior Theater Guild. They, we've asked for them to, to break down the costs of what it is and you have it in your packet. And my, my comment to this is I'm going to let them know that they cannot be messing around with the electric like they did last year, because the Aaron with the electric company wasn't volunteering his time he was going to charge them, so somebody did something with the electric and burned some lights out and some wires.
Ooh.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that can't happen.
And I will, and you know, I'll, I'll be very honest with that, we'll tell them, you know, we're going to be checking very closely and if somebody's messing around like that, we're going to be able to come out, unplug it, and if your show's ruined, it's ruined, I'm sorry, rather than taking a chance and burning the building down.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, you, you don't have somebody who's not an electrician or somebody with the old, old lights, spotlights, which I think was what they were doing last year. So.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns on that? Roll call, do, well...
We didn't get a motion yet.
Do I hear a motion?
What, is this to just approve their budget?
Yes, of $4,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Riverside Township Junior Theater Guild 2014, their budget of $4,000.
With the concerns the supervisor has.
With the concerns of the supervisor in the motion.
I guess I'll second.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and appointment of Timon Hallenbach to the Riverside Township Mental Health Board, resolution 2014 dash, I can't remember what the dash would be, do you know?
Two.
Two. I've talked to Tim and explained to him that we're looking for a concerned board member on there, somebody who will go to the meetings unless there's something, emergency comes up, obviously, will participate, will take over, you know, treasurer or what, you know, president, vice president sometime down the future, whatever, but to start swinging the board members around, and I stress very heavily, he agreed with me totally. Do I, do I hear a motion to appoint Timothy Hallenbach?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
You don't know what you got yourself into.
Motion carried.
Too late now.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for volunteering. I think you'll enjoy it, I've been on the board 10 years as the liaison and I've always enjoyed, it's a great group of people and a very, very good cause. Yeah, we do good work, yeah, thank you.
You're replacing somebody from, we want, like I explained to you before, we want to get a representation, at least of one person.
From each area.
Each community, at least, you know.
Of the township, yeah.
No, we don't have to swim in, or should we? No, I don't think so.
Don't think so, okay, thank you.
Well, if you do it, it'd be at one of your meetings.
Well, but this board appoints.
Appoints, but...
So...
And I will, the next meeting is the third Wednesday of next month.
Which is the 21st.
Which is June 21st. No, that's a Saturday.
No, 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 the next meeting is May 21st.
Oh, May 21st?
Yeah, we're still in May, so...
Oh, okay.
I didn't, you did say June, I didn't catch that originally.
Yeah, you're right, okay, I'm sorry. So it's next Wednesday. Up and coming, not the day after tomorrow, but the following. I will be here, I will be, meet you here for, to introduce you.
That's good.
Okay?
Because I won't, I'm going to do the, the talk meeting.
Right, yeah, because you're going to, you're right, so, you know, I don't want him to come in cold.
Right, good idea.
Okay. Say, oh, here I am, surprise, surprise, Anthony. Okay.
All right, good.
Here's Riverside Arts Center, FYI, Riverside Arts Centers League's weekend, you got what they've been doing?
I did have one comment on it, I got a, a postcard in the mail, a nice color postcard in the mail from on there, and it had the actual schedule of events and who was performing for both days and of what kinds. I didn't see that listed anywhere here or on a notice on the village door, I'm surprised they didn't do that.
Well, on the back here, it says Saturday, it gives you 10 to 10:45, 11 on the back.
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry, I didn't see it there. I got a small postcard with that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other further visitors, remarks? Okay, approval of warrants.
Now, did you want me to do this or do you want somebody else to do it?
Please.
I'm fine.
Please.
Either way. All right, I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $46,169.57, as presented to the board this 13th day of May 2014.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Well, I have one, one, Rich, I was curious why you paid the dues to talk so early, I mean, before the, we had the meeting, because they had indicated 60 days.
It was due, that's why.
I think the note, well, I read the notice to say 60 days from...
Well, the way I read it, it was due on a certain date, that's why.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, you know, we pay memberships no matter what. I mean, you know, but...
How much, how much was the dividend?
What do you mean, how much was that?
From torment.
Oh, I don't remember offhand. Yeah, why don't you?
Been re-promoting it.
In the magazine?
Ask these questions before the meeting and I'll find out.
That's okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $2,056.74, payroll warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $19,748.25, health warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $2,056.62, monthly filings, May 2014, in the amount of $12,024.61, general assistance warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $1,200, and township radio players warrant, May 2014, in the amount of $120, all of the above is presented to the board this 13th day of May 2014.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there any feature that caused the general assistance to drop down like that?
Well, I've been pushing, you know, I still have people's names, if I drive by and see something, a job, I'll call them at home and tell them, they'll either find jobs or they've got onto social security disability or they found their own jobs, you know, it's starting to pick up a little bit now again, so, but, you know, that's the only thing, you know. You know, you got to let them know that there's a job out there if you happen to see one, advertise for one or...
Have you made more calls about jobs, telling these guys, why don't you apply here?
Yeah.
Have you?
Yeah.
Well, it's paid off.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Septran Bus Company, you know...
Well, hopefully they're looking on their own also.
Yeah, well, they have to be. They fill out the job search sheet, you know, I spot check that, but that's getting harder and harder though, to spot, even spot check, because most of the places want to apply online and you call a receptionist, she's not going to go through a stack of applications that big for John Doe.
I don't remember the last time it was as low as $1,200. I mean, that's very good.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, I, as a minute, you know, I mean, it's, it's been a long time since.
Well, hopefully it's not like the employment rate in the country where they're just dropping off the radar.
Yeah, that's, some people have moved out of the area too. And then, you know, and when they, they come in, I'll, I'll double check to see, you know, you know, I make mailings out to their old address or their, an address, and if it comes back, I'll question them, hey, you're off the rolls, you don't live there anymore.
But can't they forward the address? Can't they go to the post office?
Pardon me?
Can't they go to the post office and put a forwarding address on there?
Yeah, they can.
When you wouldn't know that.
No, you know, but there are times when I get from the forwarding address, oh, this person doesn't, you know, has moved, they'll send it back here, you know, usually that's 50% of the time, just saying, you know, no, you know, should be forwarded to this address. At least the Riverside Post Office does that for us.
Anyway, that's progress.
It's open continues.
Right.
Okay. Do we vote on this? We're blabbing.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Artler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, I have no other comments or review. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Before, before you do that, on the financial statement, the second page for the general town fund, taxes, unemployment, I think there might be a mistake there. I mean, last year, I mean, we had the same amount budgeted for that line item and we spent like, you know, less than $50, I think, and it's already showing that we're overbudgeted by $42.79.
Sure, we will, and I will bring up the second page.
Well, see, the second page, top of the page, under personnel.
It's probably in the back of the front page, Rich. General Town Fund.
That's wrote in general systems, assessors' office. Statement of expenditure.
No, I think you went too far.
You went too far, it should be the first one.
Yeah, it's the first page on this town fund, the second page for that.
I see you have it on the side, that's what I was looking for.
Well...
Oh, okay, I see, I see you, you turned it, okay, never mind, we're...
Oh, yours isn't double sided.
No.
Oh, okay, well, where's the next page?
On page two.
Oh, no, here it is, right here.
Why? Okay.
Is that, is so very different than last year.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't know if it's a mistake, if it's not, then we need to do transfer, because we're already...
We'll find out, let's do a transfer next week.
Overbudgeted on it.
Wayne?
Yes, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you.